The Board of Commissioners meeting, please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen here. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Heinem.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Are all the microphones on? Good. Thank you. Approve or amend the agenda. Monty?
Sure. The first item we'd like to add is Sheriff Troy Heck's item on emergency service water restrictions. And if we could, let's make that Troy's second item at 9:05. So in between then Sheriff Heck and Chris Byrd, if we could add the emergency declaration resolution, and Jim is here to address that item. So let's put that between the Sheriff Heck items and then Chris Byrd items. That's the second thing. The third item is Commissioner Johnson would like to discuss County Road 62. And let's just tack that as the last thing under Chris Byrd, 910. Let's make that his last item, County Road 62. And then fourth, Commissioner Heinem want to talk about the subject of email communication from departments. And that could go under 10 o'clock, County Administrator, as the third item after the closed sessions, if you'd like. And Mr. Chair, those are the four items that we have for you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the amended agendas presented.
I'll second Mr. Chair.
Still writing. Okay, thank you. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or anything else needed or added? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that all viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the Board's chair's consent before adjusting the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allotted discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn the cell phones or turn your cell phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, anybody out there that would like to adjust the county board at this time? Natasha?
Thanks for having me.
Okay, CNN will move forward. The consent agenda item. One through 12, what would we like to do with that?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of consent agendas, items one through 12.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next item, Sheriff Troy Heck, presentation of the Sheriff's Office Annual Report.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
So as I do every year, I'd like to take just a few minutes of your time to hit some of the highlights of the annual report that was included in your packet. The hope is that this provides Commissioners and the public with a better understanding of what goes on in their sheriff's office. I won't read the entire report back to you.
Thank you.
And we're all happy for that, yes. Just hit some highlights here. As I mentioned in the report, in looking back on the year 2021, it seemed to me the best way to categorize what happened was an uneasy transition back to what we view as normal as things began to move closer and closer to pre-pandemic existence. I say uneasy because it always seemed like it was going forward, then what? We got to take a step back and forward and back. But I think that we're all the better for having gone to the point that we're at now. As this uneasy transition unfolded, we began to see again an increase in demand for our services throughout the county. Starting with the PSAP, I'll just note, first of all, that this is, of course, usually the first point of contact for people in the county who need emergency services. They either call our administration lines, or they call 911 because they need help, and they get one of our public safety telecommunications on the line. We answer the phones for our office, Foley Police and Fire, Rice Police and Fire, Sauk Rapids Police and Fire. So that's a lot of phone calls coming into that office, and they do an excellent job there. Whenever a phone call comes in that needs action, we generate what's called an initial complaint report or an ICR. In 2021, there were 28,139 ICRs, and this was a little more than 1,400 more than in 2020. The time period from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. represented the peak hours, and those hours of the day represented 46% of all the ICRs that were generated. So that's a lot of calls coming in between 11:00 and 6:00. Unsurprisingly, Fridays generate the most. That's been consistent since I can remember. And Sundays generate the least. Again, that's very consistent with the past. In 2021, we received 10,463 calls on 911. That is just short of 1,000 more than in 2020. So again, we're having more activity coming in there. Since 2017, you've been able to text 911. And in 2020, we had 74 text to 911 sessions, which is remarkable because that's 52 more than in 2020. It's a percentage increase that's quite remarkable. On the whole, 74 text 911s over the course of the year is not a lot, but they are unique in that if you can imagine a text conversation, how long that takes. If you're a dispatcher on the other end of that line trying to get all that very important information, when somebody's trying to text to 911, it can seem like an eternity. So it's not a very efficient method, which is why we are always advertising to people that they should still call 911 if they can, but text if they can't. In addition to all of these 911 calls, there were 45,417 normal telephone calls coming and going from the PSAP, and that's 853 more than in 2020. Again, the peak times were between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. in the PSAP. Moving on down to our Civil Process and Warrant Division. In 2020 and 2019, those divisions saw a pretty drastic reduction in the work that we did there because of the pandemic. However, in 2021, that turned around as people were able to start carrying out more business in the courts and foreclosures of the moratorium on them and the moratorium on evictions began to fall away. So we ended up doing 885 civil process requests, and that was 117 more than 2020. As far as arrest warrants go, again, as the courts began to open up and people were required to appear once again in court, we generated 1,569 arrest warrants, and that was just short of 500 more than in 2020. Moving on down to the Patrol Division. When most people think of the sheriff's office, they think of the folks out there in uniform in our Mark Squad cars. That is our Patrol Division staff. In 2021, the Patrol Division handled 16,075 ICRs. That's 387 more than 2020. As typical, traffic stops was the number one item on the ICRs, followed by assistance to the public and other agencies towards zero death, traffic activities, medical emergencies, suspicious activity reports, and alarms. And those are consistently the top five things that we deal with on the Patrol Division. The most common crimes in Benton County, again, these are going to sound very familiar. Theft, fraud, domestic abuse, DUI, and harassment. It's always those five. Some of them change places once in a while, but those are the most common things that we deal with. The peak time for calls for service for our Patrol Division was between 2:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., Fridays being the busiest and Sundays being the least busy. When we talk about actual crime occurring in Benton County, we get those statistics a year lagging. So this report talks about the 2020 Minnesota Uniform Crime Report statistics. When we look at those, we find that crimes are divided into Part One and Part Two. Part One are the more serious person crimes and some very serious property crimes. Part Two is mainly property crimes and nuisance crimes. Talking about Part One crimes, our crime rate was 55% lower than the state average. And for Part Two crimes, our crime rate was 23% lower than the state average. Overall, we had a crime rate that was 43% lower than the state average. So in the area of the county that we have primary jurisdiction, the unincorporated area, crime thankfully is very low when compared to the state average. When we talk about some of the other functions that we do in the sheriff's office, we take those 16,000-plus ICRs and we start talking about things that are assigned to our record staff and some of our support staff. Some of those items include 614 records checks that we did, 1,056 permits to carry a pistol. That number is a new record high. That's an 11% jump over last year's previous record highs. That's a lot of permits to carry going out the door, a lot of work that's handled by our record staff. We had 193 permits to purchase a pistol as well. That was slightly down from last year. Move on to our Investigative Division. In 2021, they were assigned 153 cases. That's a 9% increase from 2020. And out of those 153 cases, they cleared 132 of them. That's an 87% clearance rate, which is remarkable. We're very proud of the work that they do in the Investigative Division, and it's, it is, as I said, remarkable, the results they can get by putting the amount of effort into it that they do. Part of the Investigative Division is our Violent Defender Task Force. We have two full-time members on the Violent Defender Task Force whose job it is to deal with the worst offenders in our area, primarily focusing on drug crimes and gang crimes. In 2021, our vote of investigators completed 20 cases in Benton County, and methamphetamine continues to be the most common drug they encounter. However, fentanyl is the fastest rising threat that we have out there, so we're keeping our eye on that. Our Jail Division had, once again, an interesting year in 2021. While the population remained relatively low throughout most of 2021, thanks to the efforts we've made to reduce that population for COVID issues, for COVID reasons, they still presented a challenge. Because if you can imagine when we're taking people out of the facility, we're adjusting that based upon a public safety risk. So the ones that were keeping the facility, the ones that really, they got to stay there, and they are the most difficult to manage. So it's no longer a fact that you have maybe a handful of very difficult people in a larger population. These are all difficult people because they have to be in our jail. They present challenges not only based upon their criminality, but also behavior issues and mental health complications. In 2021, we had an average daily population of 41.58 inmates. That's a slight decrease of .37 average daily population compared to 2020. However, they all stayed longer. Our average length of stay was 16.21 days per inmate, and that's 3.71 days longer than in 2020. And I think that again reflects the idea that when we made those strategic decisions as to who had to stay, the people that had to stay were the ones that were going to be there for a while. As 2021 drew to a close, we began to see that that average daily population was slowly creeping up more and more. And that trend has continued into 2022, and we are rapidly approaching pre-pandemic numbers for Benton County inmates in our jail. Whether or not that trend is going to continue and spread across the state remains to be seen. So I don't know if we're going to see a demand for jail space, but our numbers are beginning to creep back up and almost at pre-pandemic levels. Probably the most significant struggle we had in the jail was detention, retention and recruitment of detention officers. At the peak of our issues, we had about 20% of our authorized positions open. That's a tough way to run a jail. At any given time in 2021, 75% of our detention officers had less than two years of experience. So we're working with, we have very good people, very talented people, but they're very new to the career and very new to Benton County. So it's going to take some time to get them trained up, but we believe we have a good team over there that are going to continue to do good work. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an appearance in front of you talking about the jail if I didn't, once again, mention mental illness. It continues to be a real issue with jails all across the state. Our state system continues to just terribly fail these people that have mental illness, and they end up being kicked out on the street. Perhaps they've been given instructions for how they can manage their mental illness, but that's complicated by the fact that they have a mental illness, and they really need a better effort put forward from our state and to truly serve them in the way that they need to be served. Because otherwise, they end up in my jail, and they don't belong in my jail. They belong to be in a facility where they can better manage what issues they have and the mental illnesses they have and get help with that. We are very fortunate that we have a bunch of people that volunteer to help us out, and that is truly remarkable and speaks volumes of the community that we have here. We have our mounted patrol members. They do remarkable work with horses. I'm sure you've seen them at the county fair. You see them in the parades. Besides just looking really cool up on horses there, they have really great jobs. The things those horses can do in search and rescue and in crowd control situations are simply incredible. And the amount of work that goes into training that horse and preparing it for those very difficult situations is remarkable. They put a lot of time and effort into being ready, and they, in 2021, the mounted patrol members worked a total of 372 hours at events. We also have a group of people who volunteer as reserve deputies. So these are the folks that you might see, for instance, at the main gate of the fair in the very dark brown uniforms, or you'll see around at various other community events. They assist us with appropriate duties for nonlicensed folks, and they put in a total of 439 hours last year on various projects. We also have 60 individuals approximately who come and volunteer in our jail. We have a lot of programs in the jail that are designed to stop people from coming back to jails so often and help them learn new things and, you know, go to the library and all kinds of programs that keep them busy. In 2021, these folks put in a total of 330 hours of programs in the jail, and we're very grateful for all the help that they provide us. In our public outreach efforts, we had 462 students come through the DARE program in six Benton County schools. We were very happy in 2021 to be able to get our Police Activities Report, I'm sorry, Police Activities League program up and running again. For those not familiar with that, that's a summer program we run with Rice and Foley where we invite children age 5 to 15 on a weekly basis to come down to a park and hang out with some cops out of uniform. They play games with them. They do crafts with them, and they get to know the police officer on a person basis and build that rapport. We also hosted the very popular Youth Snowmobile and Youth ATV certification courses. There was a time when we would advertise those to try to get people to show up and fill up those seats, and that's completely unnecessary now because as soon as that hits the DNR website, those are full. So we're very happy that we're out there helping these young folks learn how to properly ride these machines and make sure they don't get hurt. Finally, we continue to use social media and print media to get crime prevention and safety messages out there and to help share information about our office and build a better understanding with our community. So we're on Facebook, Twitter, and Nextdoor. We're also very grateful for the partnership with the Benton County News and Sauk Rapids Herald. They provide us space once a month to run a column on crime prevention and safety, and we hope that people read that and take those lessons to heart and that together we can work on making this an even safer community. So with that, I'll end my highlights and pause for any questions that you might have.
Very good report.
Very good.
Very thorough.
I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pop.
So you had a couple of things. What is a normal call versus a distress call? You said you had so many normal calls. Is that just somebody questioning what's going on, or?
Well, I guess I kind of break those down between emergent and non-emergent.
Okay.
For example, you have a theft or burglary, something like that. We're going to go to it, and we're going to do what we can versus you have a crash with injuries or, you know, a crime in progress or a domestic, something like that, that we're going to respond to in an emergent manner.
Okay. And then the other one I had was your arrest warrants. Do you have the 2019 figures compared to 20? You used 2020, and everybody knows what happened in 2020.
Yeah, I, well.
No, you don't have to. I just.
I think it's in one of these graphs here.
Okay.
If you'll bear with me for just a second. Arrest warrants in 2019, it looks like we were, you know, it doesn't give me the exact number here, but probably about 1,500. So it looks pretty close to what 2021 was.
Okay. And the other one I had, you commented, I mean, the percentage below state average is really good.
Yes.
What are we comparing to? Are we comparing to other sheriff's departments in the county, or?
You know, that's a good question. I did not look at those statistics. I would have to look at those and get back to you.
You know, because if we're comparing to every county in the state, boy, we're really in good shape at 43% less or whatever. It'd just be nice to know who we're comparing to.
Sure.
You know, I mean, because of the counties, the variation of counties across Minnesota, you know, it's got to be based on population.
Right.
You know, average population, so. But otherwise, I thought it was a really good report, and.
Thank you.
So I've got one more question. Did you fill your intern position yet?
Yes. Yes, we have selected an intern, and they'll be starting in June.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for Troy on this matter?
Thanks for the good job.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's move on, Sheriff.
All right.
Emergency service water restrictions.
So. If you'll bear with me just a moment, see if I can tackle the technology. That would be excellent. Sure. Let's just minimize this. And he's got some photos on him. Is it right? Is that it?
I think, yeah.
Okay. I'll let you go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. So coming before you today because I have concerns about the river, I'm sorry, the levels of the water on Little Rock Lake. As you're aware, we've had remarkable amounts of rain. Unsurprisingly, that rain has filtered into our watersheds, and Little Rock has some flooding going on. We've received some concerns from residents around the lake about wake causing erosion and damage to their properties, their docks, their lifts, that kind of thing. In looking into the options that we have, we responded initially by posting signs at the accesses, asking for the public's help and voluntarily complying with a no-wake zone. If we want to have some way to actually enforce that, the Minnesota rules regarding water management changed recently. And under Subpart Nine, in emergency situations, Subpart Nine of 611-0.3700, the county is permitted to take action in emergency situations and institute water control such as a no-wake zone for a period of up to 30 days. So to give you an idea of what it looks like out there, I asked our deputies to go out and take some drone footage yesterday. If we can master the technology. No. All right, so I believe that's Westlake Road in the background. Skip ahead a little bit here. You can see there's some water definitely intruding on the shore. It's definitely all the way up to the shoreline and going up into the trees here. And going up over the bank there. You can see the water is up to those docks. The decking on that dock has been removed, hopefully.
Or yet not put on.
Yeah.
Let's see here.
Or floating.
Yeah. This is Benton Beach, and I think the water has receded some already. I think there were some pictures that showed Benton Beach much, much wetter. Jeff can probably attest to that. So it's starting to go the right direction, and I'll show you the river gauge in just a moment. But you can see it's quite high, and when we pan over here to the North Freedom Road area, you can see that these docks are definitely suffering. So understandably, these folks are very concerned what would happen if boats start zipping around and start causing wakes, that their property damage is going to be exacerbated. So let's stop that. As. Okay. So this is the river gauge at St. Cloud. It's an inexact measurement. It's the closest one we have. Right now, we're in minor flooding stage, and the prediction based upon 24-hour forecast for rain, it shows that probably by the 24th, we're going to be back down to a more normal level in the river, which should equate to a more normal level on the lake. I think the thing to consider is, of course, fishing season opened this past weekend, and we have Memorial Day weekend coming up in a couple of weeks here. So the request that we're bringing forward is for the Board to consider enacting a no-wake zone within 150 feet of the shoreline through, probably through the Tuesday following Memorial Day weekend, just to give the homeowners and the shore a break through that first big weekend of boating. The reason for the 150 feet, when I was considering what to request, I looked up at the rules above Subpart Nine and Subpart Seven that talks about slow no-wake zones. And generally, when you're establishing no-wake zones, the rule is envisioning 100 feet or 150 feet from shore or across the entire water body, or where watercraft speed or weight constitutes a hazard. The 150-foot suggestion is, I guess, my best effort at making a compromise between still allowing people to use the water body and protecting the shoreline. So I would defer to the wisdom of the Board for.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, I know Sterns County has enacted that twice, you know, so now it's everywhere, which is a good thing, and I agree with this.
I, we got to do something. Mr. Chair, I totally agree. I think a couple of reasons. One is that these people on this lake have put a lot of effort and a lot of time in making this a better lake and a much more, you know, usable lake. And I think we're going to see that going forward here as the word gets out. You know, I heard last winter the fishing was incredible. The clarity of the water was incredible. So you know they're all going to come back for the summer. And I think we owe it to the people around the lake that have put this effort in to do this.
I totally agree.
I think this is happening everywhere we go right now, so I think it's only appropriate.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we.
With that, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we impose a no-wake zone according to the recommendations of our county sheriff.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Uh, clarification, Troy. In this agenda item, you said up to thirty days and then you were saying just after Memorial Day. Do we need a set time or would you like it at thirty days?
I think if we pick an end date, that saves us both, saves us all some issue of having to, uh, come back and readdress this. Um, you know, I don't believe in overburdening our, um, citizens with regulations any longer than they have to. So i- in my estimation, running it through Memorial Day weekend should get us past the biggest bump here, assuming we don't have any additional, uh, massive rains. So that would be my preference that we run it with an end date.
Mr. Chair.
Tuesday, May thirty-first?
Motion maker, would you like to put an end date on that?
Um, yeah, first of all, could we add in there that instead of having the sheriff come back if we have a large rain in June, that this could be done at his discretion instead of coming before the board?
I think if we set an end date, he would have to come back to us. Correct.
Yeah, I, in the future, we, uh, we could look at actually enacting an ordinance that would have some automatic control so we wouldn't have to keep doing this. And that's probably something wise for us to consider.
Okay. Mr. Chair, what happens if we were to do a maximum thirty days, but your discretion when to pull it off?
You're asking me to, uh, to opine in some areas that I'm uncomfortable going. Um, I, I don't know that anyone is going to be upset if you, uh, you know, you have the discretion to go up to thirty days. And if we're all gonna agree that it's up to me to stop enforcing it, I guess that, I don't think anybody's gonna, well, be upset if we stop enforcing it when the waters fall.
Or we just haven't come back if it needs to be extended.
I, I agree. I, I would rather see an end date.
Yep.
Put on it now.
Okay.
If it needs to be extended, he can come back to us.
I'll amend my motion to make it, uh, the Tuesday after Memorial Weekend.
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first.
And I'll amend the second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second on this. Any further discussion? Now to call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You might, you might wanna note that if you, if you tour up into Morrison County within the watershed, Little Rock watershed, they received more rain than we did and that's still coming your way, Troy.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Okay, next on the agenda, Jim McDermott. EMC.
Before I start, I just wanna give you the good news is that Benton County is officially out of the drought.
Okay, that's good news.
Which is the first time in a long time. We'll start off with, uh, the weather here for this week. And this is the outlook for it and it's gonna be kind of a repeat of last week.
Oh, not so heavy, I hope.
Thursday is the most severe weather, but again, it depends on how it shifts. As we'll see where we are, where in the number two zone there, um, they call it slight.
Jim, do you have one more packet? Thank you.
Don't confuse it when it says slight because slight sounds like, oh, there's not gonna be much. We always get something slight. I don't know how they figure this out, but they do. As you're aware of the storm that came through last week, last Monday through Thursday, actually, the state is declaring a, uh, they're, they're looking for a presidential disaster for the state uh, because so many counties and so many, there's counties west of us where people are still out of power and will be out of power for quite a while in up north. So I met with the, we did, uh, teleconferencing yesterday all day with the state and the region to start to get the numbers we need to get, uh, what they call a property damage assessment going. So we see if we're eligible. Now Benton County, because of its population, has to reach at least eighty-four thousand dollars in damage to be eligible for state funds. It's double that to get FEMA funds. Last week, I asked all the townships and the cities and the co-ops and the school districts and anything public orientated to give me what I call their, uh, scientific wild guess uh, of what their damages are because they need that to get this going. Uh, so far, the only reports I've got are from Mayhew Township of approximately ten thousand. And a lot of this is gonna be roads and ditches and, and stuff like that. Uh, WATAB had ten grand, Sauk Rapids Township, five thousand. Foley, the city of Foley, fifteen hundred and, uh, the county, Chris, had about fifty thousand. So that puts us at seventy-six thousand, five hundred. What I need you to do is if you can contact the leaders of the townships and the cities within your districts and kinda nudge them because I need all this by Thursday. And if we don't get that, then we're out all that money. And I know there's damage sitting out there. There's a lot of damage, uh, um, even shingle damage, uh, anything. Here's a list of what FEMA allows for damage. And there's so many things on there, a lot of people don't even think. Taking the time to put barricades out is reimbursable, so.
Does this money go directly to the people that report it?
Pardon me?
Does this money go directly to the people that report it or is it kinda spread out through the county?
Money?
Yeah.
Each entity's gonna have to show up at this property damage assessment meeting we're gonna have and bring pictures and bills and receipts and that. And then they work with them in getting the reimbursement over it. And it's gonna be by township, by city, by county.
Yeah.
So it's not one big lot that gets distributed. It's what your damage is minus anything that might be covered by insurance or that. So the, uh, so what I'm really asking for is, uh, your, your help and kinda lighting the fire. You know, I'm just, just, that's what I am. And when I ask somebody, uh, eh, we'll get to it. But this is always the issue we've had over the years. Some townships have deliberately in the past not reported a penny of damage when they could have because we take care of ourselves. Well, by doing that, they hurt their neighbors if we don't hit that limit. So this is kinda like being a good neighbor. Our co-ops, we have two major co-ops, Power and, and Telecom, that I still haven't heard from. Uh, I haven't heard from any of the school districts in the past. We've had storms come through and they've had damage to their fields and stuff like that. And that's all goes into this. Haven't heard a thing out of Bryce, Gilman, Sauk Rapids, Sartell, uh, any of those. So the PDA process has been started now. In the meeting yesterday, I gave them my numbers and they put us down as, as potentially meeting the state at least and working towards the federal, which would give you more money. I have to get another report back to them by this Thursday, Friday. And then they're gonna start, they said, probably starting at the top of the state, working its way down. And they'll get back to us in a couple of weeks for a meeting. And this process is gonna take anywhere from, uh, three to four months to get, you know, through, so. And we had the, I think, the resolution to the emergency declaration is just part of that whole process too, uh, based upon this severe weather. Uh, this one is gonna run from May ninth through the thirteenth. And if we get more weather this week, it'll be a separate declaration again. So that's how they do those things. But I just thought I'd bring you up to date on that and let you, and let you know where we're at. And then I would appreciate any little help you have with your contacts, so.
Mr. Chair, Jim, just to be clear, are you suggesting that we have those local officials contact you directly? Or who are they to contact?
Yeah. You can tell them that if they can, kind, well, the city of Sauk Rapids, the city of Sartell, the city of Bryce and Foley all have a designated emergency manager. Uh, they can give the information to them and have them contact me. Now Gilman is supposed to have one too by law, every city, but I have no idea who that is. And then the townships will have to get, get back to me and as I say, would go with the, um, co-ops. The cities can just let their emergency managers, and I've been sent the information out to them, so. It's, it's not that they're not out asking and looking, they're just don't understand the, the time element in this, so.
I guess, Mr. Chair. The townships that have used it in the past, they know about it and they're pretty quick to the draw to get reported to you, right?
Well, yeah, well, the WATAP was one of the first. And, and you can tell with the flooding they're, they have on their lake there now. We did see some sandbags and everything and that's from those fifty thousand we gave them two years ago. So, uh, they're, they're used to that. A lot of them haven't gone out to look at their roads and their culverts and their digits and that can add up rapidly, so.
All right.
Okay.
We need a motion on this?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a state of emergency in Benton County related to the storm events for the week, May ninth.
Second. Second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Okay, Chris Berg, Public Works, award a construction contract for two thousand twenty-two gravel crushing project.
All right. Excuse me for my delay here. Emergency management director was just giving me some, that same information for us to consider, so. Um, yeah, we had numerous locations off Prostate County. Oh, we're water over top of the road. So a lot of our costs are just labor costs, uh, uh, just putting out barricades and, and things like that. So with more rain in the forecast, uh, let's just hope it doesn't get any worse. But let's get back to the agenda at hand. My first item that I had is to award a construction contract for seasonal gravel crushing, uh, project. Normally, this is, uh, about a ninety thousand dollar line item. State law requires us to go for sealed bids when we exceed a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we went with quotes this year. Last year, we received a lot of, uh, bids, uh, seven to be exact. Uh, this year, we, we knew that our lowest bidder from last year had sold their business and is no longer, uh, doing this work. So we reached out to the next three lowest bidders to see if they'd give us a quote. We had a difficult time getting, uh, contractors to actually want to quote us. Uh, there's a lot of work out there and really, nobody needs the work. So we kinda begged and pleaded because we need to get some gravel crushing. And we got one, uh, one quote back, uh, from Hard Rock Screening, who was the next lowest bidder, uh, on our project last year. They were outbid by Brown Excavating, which no longer does it. So we don't think we needed as much as we did last year. We want to crush about twenty thousand yards in that Eisen Shank pit. And they quoted us at three dollars and sixty cents per yard for a total of seventy-two thousand, uh, dollars. I think in my agenda item, I, I noted that this was, uh, an increase over last year. So a forty percent increase in prices over last year. So if we had done the same quantity, um, we would have probably overran our, our budget. So we, we knew kinda going into this, it was gonna be expensive. Tried to reduce the amount of quantity to crush. Uh, we're gonna use every bit of that twenty thousand yards. Um, we knew we had some shouldering that we needed to do. These washouts that we've just had in the last week is gonna eat up some of this quantity as well. So if the board, eh, sees fit, I'd recommend, uh, awarding a construction contract to Hard Rock Screening.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Binsky.
Chris, with, with these washouts and you just mentioned that, that's gonna use up some of that twenty thousand. We're not cutting ourselves short on this twenty thousand. Would it behoove us to go to twenty-five or something?
We might, we might, once we get into contract with them, if they're set up there, we'll probably certainly ask them to, to crush, crush more, so. Even with the disaster declaration, it's never a hundred percent funded. We'll still have to come up with a little bit of a local match, so. We just had quoted twenty thousand, so I'll just sticking with that. I think once we get into contract, we, we do definitely, in the contract languages, have options to, to overrun to additional quantity at this price.
Commissioner Pop.
I would definitely look at overrunning that because, um, even if you got it left for next year, what the heck? I mean, now, I mean, we have it out there, we own the pit.
It's not going down.
It's not, yeah, it's not going down. I, I would, I would bet that your forty percent excess cost is running fuel alone. The fuel cost that these people are gonna incur at today's cost is unreal unless they pre-bought.
Exactly right.
I mean, it's just, you know, fuel is unreal, so. Um, I don't foresee the forty percent being as.
So Chris, on the contract, uh, how much over allotment can we go with the contractor?
Typically, the contract language is, um, it has language in there, twenty-five percent over without a price adjustment.
Okay.
If we go over that, then we may go back to them and say, hey, we're giving you a lot more quantity. Can you help us out on the unit price?
Mm-hmm.
But likewise, if we were only, it's, if we only use seventy-five percent of the contract, it does allow them to come back to us and say, hey, you didn't use all the quantity. We need a unit price adjustment, so. It's, it's more about time. I know that was the, the ones that did not submit bids, we heard that, is that we already have enough work this summer. We can't commit to coming in and crushing it for you. So it could be come down to, uh, them if they're available.
So I.
And not have to get to another job.
I, I have another question for you. How long does it take for them to crush that?
Usually, we get that in within ten days or so.
Okay.
So with setup and crushing, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pop.
I guess I would, uh, know on a couple, couple companies that do that, I would start looking earlier in the year to get these out for, you know, like the end of this year for next year. We'll get a few more people to bid and, uh, we may get better bids. We're kinda like, you know, late to the draw here. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of work out there and if you have one or two contractors that quit, then you're in a bind. So I guess I would move a little, a little earlier in the game, get this crushing done.
Sure.
And maybe in the future, we look at crushing for two years at a time.
That was brought up when we were actually, uh, talking about buying the pit.
Yeah. I mean, we have no, you know, we, I mean, no, we get all the storage we need out there, right?
Oh, that, that's true, yeah, so.
And maybe we can get a better price. Maybe instead of three sixty, we could have done it for three forty if we'd have crushed twice the amount.
What do you, uh, Mr. Chair? What do you think about this, the direction to go to the twenty-five percent over right away and be done with it?
Oh, boy, I think we're gonna have to.
It, my opinion is that we should try to go over, go to that twenty-five percent over as long as the contractor has the time. I don't think you're gonna get any better price change, though.
Yeah. I just will caution that we're trying to show restraint within our budget on other things that are overrunning and stuff too, so. But if that's the direction that, uh, I'm being given, we'll certainly reach out to them today and say, um, be prepared to come in another five thousand, you know, twenty-five percent over and crush that, so.
I would agree.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to award the construction contract to Hard Rock Screening for seventy-two grand with the discretion of county engineer to go up to twenty-five percent overage.
I'll second that. Um, also for further discussion, Chris, just a quick dramatical correction on the resolution. Second line, county-owned gravel pit instead of ravel pit.
Good. Yeah, suppose you didn't catch that because that is a word.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right.
Award a construction contract, seasonal bit, two minutes overlay?
Yeah, so this is a, an interesting thing. So, um, yeah, I do recognize that maybe we're somewhat behind on getting these bids out, uh, with everything that's going on. If you'd like to remember how they did this last meeting to get this to display. I have, we opened bids on this yesterday, um, for seasonal patching of a two minutes, uh, overlay.
Chris, do you want to use the?
Yeah, I was gonna try to turn the overhead on to share that since I do have the abstract. It was not.
Let's see if we can get it going. Let's turn on the light. Try hitting this button. Sometimes you just have to shut it, shut it off and turn it back on. That works it back. Give us a second here and we'll come up.
We did have, I think, four plan holders.
We did have, I think, four plan holders. Uh, we did only receive two bids, uh, on this project as well. What's interesting is the two bids were within forty dollars of each other. So, it was extremely tight. They're basically giving us both the same price, uh, for batuminous prices. So, our two bidders were OMG Midwest, doing business as Minnesota Paving, the old hard drives company, if you remember them, and then Knife River. So, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars was the low bid. That is over our estimate. We had increased our estimate. Uh, what we were hearing a month ago from our neighboring counties that were opening bids, what they were getting at batuminous prices, um, but it even came in higher than that. Once again, this is another forty percent increase in batuminous prices over last year. We have, we broke it up into several different, or, yeah, four different items based on the location. But that total tons, uh, comes out to about sixty-seven dollars a ton. When, so that's about twenty dollars more than it was last year, um, for, for batuminous prices.
Price of oil.
Yeah, twenty dollars more than what we bid last fall, uh, for the construction projects that we already had under contract. Uh, and probably five dollars more than it was from neighboring counties a month and a month and a half ago. So, continues, prices continue to increase. I don't know, we have a budget of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this. So, it is over our estimate and over our budget. It's kinda like gravel crushing. I don't see this price coming down if we were to rebid it, certainly not this year. Some of this work does need to be patched this year. Uh, this includes quantity for the railroad crossing at County Road Forty. I remember us discussing that before. We gotta get to, we got some bad areas on Casatue just east of the lake. We need to patch. So, we always look at things like that, if there's some, some things that we can cut. I, I'm sure we can cut some, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to get back. We're not gonna be able to cut twelve percent of it to get back to our, our estimate. Because then, once again, but like usually typical contract language is if we cut more than, more than twenty-five percent, they're gonna wanna seek a price adjustment. Because I think a lot of this cost is wrapped up in their fuel, um, of just doing our work.
So, if we go into an agreement with this, with one of these companies, are they able to charge us additional money for, uh, field surcharge and that?
No, that was not in the bidding proposal. Sometimes that's written into projects, but this was not. So, if it can, if prices continue to go up, they'll have to honor these unit prices. If something miraculous happens and fuel prices go down, um, we would still have to pay these prices or two, but... I think the current trends are still going up.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Pop.
So, how much of this, Chris, could we cut without getting penalized?
Um, oh yeah, we were looking at that, uh, we're probably twenty-five thousand. We could probably get it down to eight hundred thousand dollars, so. Which is still probably about fifty thousand dollars over our, our budget.
Cause you mentioned something on County Road Two. I know we got that on the docket for doing something and I know it's, you know, it's kinda like going to crap pretty fast.
Yeah, right, right, east, right there at the campground. I don't know if you, I was out there looking at that culvert last week and yeah, the road is, so that's what a lot of this is, is just, it, they're Band-Aids to hold us over until the, the road construction project shows up in our five-year CIP.
I would, I would do that Band-Aid pretty little if I was the highway department on that road. Because, I mean, I, I hate to spend money on something that we're gonna be ripping up in a year or two.
Yeah, um, the way things are looking though, I don't know, and that's was our concern. Casatue, maybe if we're, we're, we're trying to get federal funding for that, that's at least four years out from today.
Okay.
So, um, and yeah, a lot of this is, is, yeah, we're putting the minimal amount on top of it and they're, and they're just short sections, which does drive up the unit price too. I mean, these paving contractors, like long, straight stretches of road where, uh, you're not picking up and moving your equipment across the county, but, um, we're doing a bunch of just short little patches, except for on County Road Twelve. We're doing that. That's, that's rutting pretty bad and becoming a safety concern.
Mr. Chair? Chris, I was wondering if, um, perhaps to do what you, you feel you've gotta do this year in, in patching, we may have to sacrifice the, the resources that go to the road ditch maintenance. Would that be a possibility? I know there's a hundred and thirty thousand there for road ditch maintenance. I'm wondering if that's a possibility, at least just this year, to sacrifice that, to do what you need to do on the patching. And I guess at some point, with the twenty-three budget, we're gonna have to address both.
Yeah. That, that is something that, that, that we, I was looking at internally. As you recall, the, the road ditch maintenance is kinda funded with, uh, wheelage tax.
Question, yeah.
That was gonna be my backup plan is look at wheelage tax and maybe having a one-time transfer of additional wheelage tax if we needed to. But that may be the easiest short-term thing is...
Yep, cause I, I can see basically you're, you're sort of putting together the, the seal coat budget and the patch budget as one to make this work.
Yep.
And I know that, that's happened in the past.
Yeah.
Where you may not do any seal coating, but you throw it all in the patch, yeah.
Commissioner Gopinski?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. That's a logical area to pull it from, but I don't know.
About to own.
Yeah. I'm gonna tell you, I, I did a little, after my APO meeting last week, I did a little driving of some watersheds. And I think we got some, we got some ditch issues coming with all the runoff from fields and everything. I got pictures and some of that is gonna be pretty, I don't, I don't know how you fix some of that.
Yeah, um, some of that, I think, yeah, you're referring to like the county ditches and then, uh, uh, some of it is in the roadway ditches.
Yes.
Which we're looking at here, so.
Yeah.
Well, again, I was just suggesting possibly just a short-term.
Short-term, yeah.
Short-term, and then when you talk about the twenty-three budget, you may have to make some adjustments to the patch budget going into next year if you wanna keep doing the same level program.
I guess where I was going with is, I went from a twenty-nine tour to seeing a whole bunch of water everywhere and I just started following the water. And then you start looking at some of the other things that come with it, like where it's all funneling into these big culverts. And I'm like, there's, I way, I know way too much about ditches right now. And, uh, I, I appreciate all the work everybody's been doing on them. I, I just had, I, I, I looked at, there's so many things that happens before it gets into a ditch. And it's, it's insane just all the, I mean, there's literally gullies in fields that are just washed in the dishes, ditches right now. Into side, into the road ditches.
Mr. Chair, and on that, you, you know, we've talked in the past that if you got your road ditches and they're constantly full of water, that road bed is suffering all the time. You know, you're sitting on that sponge. I guess one of my comments would be that, uh, going forward here, I don't wanna see these kind of, these kind of numbers. Had this been done in January, we probably could've shaved five percent off that twelve percent. Because you know what oil prices have done and this is, uh, from, from your office out there, whoever's in charge of getting these bids out there and making sure they get back, that should've been done. And we should've been seeing this in February because we'd be five percent off this twelve percent, which would be a seven percent increase, which we could live with. I don't, I don't like this coming late to the game for these kind of bids.
Yeah, I, I agree. Earlier is better. Um, uh, a lot of it is dependent on our, our five-year plan. What's, what was adopted and, and accepted in our five-year plan? Are we gonna get to that in the next five years? And that's what we really look at with these patches too. Some of the stuff starts falling apart in the spring.
I agree with that.
And, and we get to the point where it's like, that's where we sit down, me and the engineer, assistant engineer and the maintenance superintendent, we look at it and say, this is this road. Do we have, are we gonna be able to get to it in the next five years? No, let's put that on the list, uh, this one. And then, then we come up with a list, based on the maintenance superintendent, what he sees. Uh, and then we have to even call that down from that and say, well, there's, there's way too much that needs attention that we can't get down. But, but I, I agree with you. Earlier is better before contractors, um, get filled up with work.
And we have, you know, we've, we increased the patch budget a cou- few years ago. And we know what it, we're gonna spend on patch budgeting, so I guess I'd, I'd at least get that much out there to get it bid and then, you know, then you can decide what you need to do and what you don't need to do after you, you get a bid because, um, we know these bids. I mean, I just look what I paid for my diesel fuel six weeks ago and what I'm paying today and, and it's a drastic change and that's what's reflecting right here.
Yeah. Well, Board, what do we wanna do with this item?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll recommend that we go with the lowest responsible bidder. And that the, uh, the engineering department at the highway looks at maybe if there's a place here, a place there, we could cut. Otherwise, we're gonna have to borrow it from the road ditch, um, fund for this year.
Okay, we got a motion? Go ahead.
Second, and for discussion, one very small correction, Chris, on the resolution. Your bid openings were on Monday, May sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution says the seventeenth. I just wanna double check on.
That's today, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this point in time, Chris, we're gonna have to have you come back because we're gonna have to go into closed session at ten o'clock.
All right. It won't be too far away.
Okay. Right, yeah. So, Mr. Chair, uh, we'd like to do two closed sessions in a row and if we could go to those two agenda items. They're both under the same statute, attorney-client, privileged at thirteen D dot O five subdivision three B. But I should just mention for the record, the first closed session will be a discussion with, uh, uh, outside attorney regarding the, the litigation on the Dallas Place Shelter in East St. Cloud. And then the second will be on, uh, involving litigation, uh, by a former employee alleging violations of the Federal Family Medical Leave Act. So, if we could commit both those motions to the record, uh, we can then go into closed session. We are going to discontinue.
Our motion to go into closed session with those noted.
Second.